Good morning. It's nine o'clock, October the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and our regular commissar's court meeting will begin with a public hearing. So this public hearing is in relations to a application from a solar farm to for reinvestment zone, and it is required under, I guess, the law strip to make sure that that reinvestment zone is, as a public, has a right to comment on it or any other issues that may be relevant to the zone. Basically, this is for, let's see. This is for, this is the La Camina Solar Project. It is a project that will be built on about five mile leash of thirty-one sixty-nine in San Ignacio. According to their application, it'll be a total of about a little over a thousand acres. The proposed project will be La Camina Solar LLC, and this is a project by Jerem Meunables, and their request being the project will entail about one hundred and fifty megawatts, which will be about a hundred and fifty million dollar investment in our community. They will require approximately two hundred and fifty temporary full-time construction employees during the pre-construction phase, and they anticipate that construction should begin, or anything goes as planned, during the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-six and effectively be completed by the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-seven. So I guess if there's anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this proposed project and the proposed establishing of a reinvestment zone for this project by the court will be considering that in the agenda. If there are any more comments, any comments in the public on this proposed project? If not, we'll close the public hearing and move to our regular scheduled meeting. And so first item on the agenda is a roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane L. Almon. Morning, Mary Jane.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner, Judge Rathnau.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Lisondo.
Present.
Commissioner Solis. And Commissioner Garza. We have questions.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our pledge of allegiance. Will every one of you rise and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, communications. Communications at this time in the court. We can see that early voting has started for our general assembly room eight election. Is that correct, Madam Jane?
Yes, Judge, that is correct. We're going to be open the weekdays from eight a.m. to seven p.m., Saturday from eight to five, and Sunday from twelve to five.
One week, and then the second week will just be the five days?
The five days, yes.
So Saturday is at eight to five, or is it nine to five?
Eight to five.
Seven to eight to five?
You know what? It's nine to five.
That's right.
It's nine to five, you're right. Yes, nine to five. And then, yeah, which is used to be eight to five. Yes, and then on the Sundays, it's gonna be twelve to five.
Very well. Any other communications? Now we'll move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the commissar's court on any items on the agenda. Some members of the public want to address the court. If not, we'll move on to item number six, a pool of invoices in your packets. We had invoices from ten, seven, two thousand and twenty-two through ten, twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, for a total of one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve, seconded by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion, although in favor of the AI?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yep.
It's the same amount, Judge.
The same amount?
Motion to approve.
Approval of checks issued number seven is one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight and forty-nine cents. Oh, here it is. Can we be a little bit more descriptive? I mean, it's hard for us to, you know, I'm going through these packets on a daily basis before the meeting, and it's just very difficult to see what type of expenses are being made, how we can collaborate, who's pending what. So just it's difficult for, I mean, we approve part of lunch, basically, but.
Right. Yes, we can get together and see what other descriptions the court would want on there.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'd like a little bit more information on what exactly the expenses are with.
Like from what departments or?
Yes.
Okay. We'll talk to the, to the software company and see what.
Do you see a report?
Yes.
It's just the numbers, and it's very difficult to.
If you don't see them.
Where the money's coming from, and I mean, I know it goes through your department to approve these invoices.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
But I would like to.
Yes.
Have a second look at it.
Well, if you have a question, I need to know what you need to see, because you can see the vendor on the left-hand side.
Yes.
Who's table to the invoice, the reference number, whatever's on the invoice, that's what it says.
Yeah, it's just hard to see who, what, what department's coming up from.
The department, Judge, will be like five, six, three, like by the time the tax office.
Yeah.
Because I can get, I'm familiar with all those, the department numbers.
Yeah, I guess.
And then.
Maybe I need to come more versed on the actual numbers, but.
And the description is what's on there.
Yeah.
Vehicle maintenance, the pavilion, fairgrounds, repairers, and supplies.
Yeah, I think, I'd like a little bit more clarification as to what they are.
It's just a matter of talking to the software company and see what we can do where everybody's had.
What do you wanna, what do you wanna see on it?
I was just, we're voting on this, and we're reviewing them, and I don't have enough information.
Yeah, because we could bring a box, and if there's one of y'all wanna see.
Well, that might be something that.
Or y'all could get together before the meeting and review them. That way, we can, if y'all have any questions, then we can bring it up.
I don't mind going through the, I mean, if the commissar finds with the way it is, the package, I'd like to see a little bit more of it.
Yeah, because, you know, just so we'll know what other descriptions you need from this report. So we'll go back to the first thing.
Like asking like from each department, like maybe putting like precinct two, precinct one, or from what department is coming from?
We can look at it.
Yeah, we can look at it. Also, y'all can call me, get any time on any, if you see one, if you have a question on it, I'll find out.
Yeah, we usually get it Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
And so we're putting on Monday.
Right.
So over the weekend, it's like, yeah, okay.
We'll look at it.
I mean, we're done for a long time, yes.
No, we'll look at it. Prove it.
I don't try to improve it. I just need additional.
We're just trying to prove it, yeah.
Yeah, because if y'all wanna pick it up, do you ditch right now, Thursday or Friday morning, and then review it Friday before we meet, and then we'll bring to the court that invoice? I mean.
That'll work, okay. I think just, because usually, I actually on Friday afternoon.
If there's a process to improve it, and, you know, why not?
Okay, moving on to the other group, the check to approve item.
Mendoza, Garza, and Terri. Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to the action item. We will deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number eight is to approve an engineering agreement between Zapata County and the C.T. Grand Corporation for Zapata County Airport Field Farm Improvements. So this commissar that we mentioned last meeting, we did receive a grant award from Tech dot for the replacement of the fuel tanks, which are inoperable. We're not able to sell any fuel at the airport for the last few months. The total cost of the project was seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Tech dot project totaled, we approved, they approved a grant of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The state, it was a seventy-five, twenty-five grant, so the state fund share will be four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. So our local matching will be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That was for five fifty. So we have to add another two hundred thousand because of the total cost of the project is seven hundred and fifty thousand. So the total county responsibility will be three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The funds are available there in the Airport Enterprise Fund. That, those funds are dedicated for the use of airport improvements, and we have a balance of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. So we do have the funding to match. So we're getting a substantial help from the Tech dot aviation to, I think there's pictures on the page of the fuel tanks that will be in place, that will be installed hopefully by February, and we can start once again, resume selling, selling fuel. But it will be two, twelve thousand, gallon tanks, together with all the equipment, carb meters, lighting. So it's a, it's a design that has been installed in other airports in our area, and you can see the, the flat, there will be an expansion of the current area that the tanks are currently placed on, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lisondo, their second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mendoza. Any discussion?
Judge, do we have any, a start date for this project?
I think the design will be, as soon as, I guess, we approve the contract, the beginning of the design, and I think the actual, we're hoping by February, it'll likely be installed, so it'll, it's gonna move quickly.
Okay.
That's, that's what the engineers are telling me and our airport manager, every lady too. So we got a motion by Commissioner, it is on the second by Commissioner Mendoza. Any discussion, although the pair of the AI? Motion carries. Item number nine is to compel the county treasurer to issue payroll for Operation All-Star staff department, in all departments. I know, we've been going back and forth every seven years on this. Operation All-Star entails law enforcement, but it also entails the prosecution side of the operation, which includes staff from the county attorney's office, prosecutors, county clerk's office. I think there may be my office, there's probably four or five departments involved. We have been waiting to get clearance. We did receive clearance two, three weeks ago after we stopped at the governor's office. They are, I guess, budget amendments were under review, but they have since been cleared for payment. I just need to know what, what we need to do to.
Can you get him to podium, please?
Well, it's all right. I mean, he can say that.
I can go see. Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. I know that since we're here, that we'll be going back and forth, and I'd like to, you know, take this opportunity to try to explain to the court that it's not a personal thing coming.
No, I never have one, yes.
Well, if we're using language like compel, you're forcing me.
Well, well.
I mean, if we're going to that extent.
Personal, what?
But, okay, it's on the agenda. But I'd like to explain why I haven't been doing it. This email, Judge, came to your office, and it's an email from your separate.
Can you read it? I, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
And when, when was the date on that?
May of this year.
Of course, yes, May. It's been six months since then. We've made.
Okay, and I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read the reply from the governor's office.
Well, and that's why, I mean, it says that no supplemental payments will be made to them. So we, we had to amend our, our request to the governor's office, because when we submitted a budget to the governor's office and say, okay, we're gonna be part of this initiative, this is what our departments need, it's not gonna be overtime, our departments are working during their working hours. So what we said is, we want a percentage of, basically, a salary increase for the extra work that these employees are having to do. And, but I guess the word supplement was included. They said, well, we can't supplement.
Yeah, and, you know, that's fine. But when I have an email in front of me, I don't have another email telling me to approve the supplement.
It's not a supplement. We submitted an amended budget.
Okay, I don't have anything in writing. How do I pay something when the last email said, it's telling me the funding source allows a percentage of the salary tied to a daily activity report, which they call it a DAR report.
Yes.
For all full-time employees who are dedicated a hundred percent of their time to the OLS activities. This grant does not allow salary supplements, stipends, or augmented pay as described in the current budget, as we have discussed with Zapata County in reference to this grant.
Okay, so, okay, so you don't need the amended budget request that we submitted, and that was approved, and once we get you that information, then we can move forward? This is about, we got.
I know that one's in black and white.
These, okay, these, these departments were approved for three point nine four nine million dollars, almost four million dollars, and to date, we have spent zero on it, because we've been held up.
I mean, the sheriff's department's been spending.
Well, I, I know, but the other departments, we have like two million dollars worth that was for the other departments.
I mean, there's a lot of things that are still outstanding. I hope we looked on Friday, was, has everything been cleared? It's easy administrator, not.
Yes, but I, I think it's unfair to have our employees from different, county clerks, my department, county attorneys, district, even your department, having to do extra work and not being compensated.
They're not, they're, my, don't qualify. So originally, just to, I guess, try to keep me happy, y'all included, I did request to include my, my staff.
They were included because they're having to do extra duties.
Yeah, and, but they don't qualify, because we're not doing all of this stuff.
Oh, you're not submitting payments to all of it?
Well, it's part, I take it as part of, for running.
Well, that's fine.
So I don't need to.
Well, if you wanna exclude your department, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's your employee's loss.
I told.
Yeah, that's your loss to employees, but I can tell you, my employees will not be working extra duties for free.
And that's fine, but the second reason is not to buy by federal payroll laws. Anywhere in the United States, whether it's here at the county, or at the, at the bank, or the oil field, any employee that works over forty hours in a, in a week.
That's right.
Anytime over forty hours, I have to pay it as time and a half. So that means that an employee working.
This amounts, I know what you're getting at. They're not working overtime, but what?
I know they're not.
This will be, this will amount to a salary increase to these employees for their work.
Okay, I mean, once I get it in writing, so I can tell you.
We'll work on that, we'll get you in writing, and it's, it's an amount to a salary increase. They're not gonna be working overtime, but they will be compensated for being part of the initiative. If they're not, then we're out of the initiative, I can tell you right now. So, but it's not gonna be overtime. They're not gonna work overtime. It'll be a salary increase.
Yeah, if it's overtime, that they.
It's not overtime, sir.
I guess not.
Okay, all right.
Labor laws, federal labor laws.
I understand, they're gonna be working their eighty hours.
Eighty hours.
Right, but they're gonna give a salary increase.
So at the present time, you're submitting eighty county hours, plus another twenty or thirty.
No, no, sir. It's, it's a total of eighty hours at a different rate, payday.
Okay, because once I have it in writing, so I can.
All right, we'll, we'll get that in writing.
You know, it's not that I don't wanna do it, but.
I think you're being extremely difficult, and, and I think.
Difficult to show me, show me in writing where they.
We, I have, we will show you in writing, but.
Okay, I mean, is that difficult for you to provide me with, or the governor's office?
No, I think we will, we'll get that information.
The person that.
I just, I feel if county employees are doing extra work for a governor's initiative, they should be compensated for it. That's it.
And that's fine, and that's fine.
All right, we'll get to it. We'll get you that information.
Yes, but let me clarify one last thing.
Okay.
You know, once they tell me in writing, I'll be more than glad to. I mean, it's not that I personally wanna go against the court.
I think you've been very difficult, yes.
I mean, you keep saying that I'm being difficult. Judge, I cannot do anything that it's not legally right for me to pay, the way they're submitting the hours.
We have turned in, we have been approved by the state, which is.
In the period.
We have been approved by the state to, for the.
But where is the email coming from?
That was the email in May, you're using the first year.
Well, where's the new one?
Okay, I'll get you the new one, okay?
Because I get copied on every one I get.
I appreciate that, all right.
So doesn't say, thank you. So don't tell me I'm being difficult.
You are. You're being difficult.
If you want me to call the labor and house.
That's okay, all right. It just, you've been, Commissioner Lina, have you been against any initiative?
I don't appreciate you saying those terms, Judge.
All right, okay, we'll move on.
I make a motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to table. We'll move on to item number ten, is to water management services for one or more hazard mitigation assistance grants from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, Texas Water Development Board, and/or other sources, including Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, and/or Flood Mitigation Assistance. So basically, this is a, we have three firms applying for administration services. I think this, these services will entail possibly, the county has, I guess, begun or authorized a feasibility study on basically trying to recycle some of our sewer street water or other sources that we can help in combating the local lake levels. We also have drainage problems in our community, so these firms, there's apparently with, with the new government funding, federal government funding, there is a, money's available that may help the county in this respect. And I, moving forward, I don't know if it's something that the county can afford to get into. Basically, the start of this is select a firm, they'll be coming forward to see what they can find and see if there's any match or not that the county will have to come up with. So if there's nothing concrete, I guess this step will be a, the first step in trying to see if, if there's any funds out there. I, I'm kinda cautious on moving forward with these projects, but.
Okay. Do we have, who were the three firms that, that they are promoting?
Yes, they have Carlos Bolina Vargas and Associates, Border Affairs, and Grant Works. There was three evaluators. The scores are, with the highest being the recommended, the Mr. Carlos Bolina Vargas Associates received a total of two hundred and nineteen points. Border Affairs received a total of two hundred and forty-seven points, and Grant Works received a total of two hundred and fifty-one points as from the three evaluators, which was, I believe, Nelly through for personnel and my, Rock to my assistant. And the scores are there in the packets. So on, on the surfaces, there's no, I guess, funding or cost associated with the county undertaking this presently. There may be some in the future, and I guess we'll have to take that step where the, the project is a viable project, and where we can afford to move forward with, with some of these major projects, but.
I'm sorry, Mr., so the highest, so the recommendation of the committee would be Mr. Borja Vargas?
No, Grant Works.
We go with the highest number, the total?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'll read it. So, but they're also the most expensive?
Yes, they, they were. There were other factors included in the, in the evaluation of it.
Significantly more expensive, so what are the factors that went into it? I mean, you're charging fifty thousand dollars to perform a study, basically.
Correct. Well, to. Well, no, and also to do the, the actual grant.
Grant, I think. I think their expertise and staff, I think.
That was the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Other, and in the packet, you should have, turn the page, you'll see the experience, which is related experience, background for specific project type, references from current pipelines. Next one is work performance, capacity to perform, and proposed cost is ten points out of the, oh, not ten, twenty, twenty percent out of the hundred.
It's a lot of difference to.
That's what I'm asking them, the scope of work was the same. It was submitted to all three of being the same.
Correct, correct. That hasn't been an issue in the past. I don't care who they choose, but in the past, we chose, I guess, the ELC grant, I think, we, we chose, according to their committee recommendation, and they actually were more expensive, Commissioner. You make the most.
What on, border affairs cost at that time was important to you? What on, border first came in with twenty thousand, but we didn't really, you know, we were looking at what they, what they've done in the past. We didn't really have any experience with them, we had experience with the other two. Which we appreciate border affairs applying, but it was just.
Yeah.
I think we've ever seen that company in our public forum.
Well, no. Rather than.
So y'all, your recommendation is Grant Works?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve their recommendation?
I think a motion to approve Grant Works.
There are second? Second, although the pair of the AI? Motion carries. Item eleven, to water engineering architectural services for the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grants from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, Texas Water Development Board, and/or other sources, including Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, and/or Flood Mitigation Assistance. And so basically, this is the engineering service, and I guess we have one applicant, Premier Engineering. Might be the lead year.
So then, we still went through the process of evaluating, but.
Moving to, Omar, the contract to Premier Engineering.
Motion by Commissioner, Mendoza seconded by Commissioner Garza, although the pair of the AI?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twelve is to approve the use of funds from the precinct two auction for the purchase of Caliche. Commissioner Lisondo?
Yes, Judge, I think this item will be adjudged, just to, to see if we could use that money.
How much was the total from that auction?
Sixty-seven thousand.
I mean, if we don't need to use it all, we don't. I just need to make sure that we pick several. I mean, up to right now, it's still like it wasn't that.
Sure.
It has like, I keep getting calls from.
And this was all precinct two included?
Yes, it was precinct two.
Andy, do we have a breakout, because I know we've had several auctions, you know, since we started using this new company, which has been, you know, very successful, that they're definitely successful. Do we have like a breakout of what hasn't sold since the start, and what precincts it belongs to?
I, I don't know. On the first auction that we had, it was about, it was all the departments, with the exception of maybe Commissioner Lisondo's. So since she has most of her equipment and everything over there in San Ignacio, so those were not, her precinct was not included in the first one. The first auction, I believe it was like a hundred and sixty thousand, and it was mainly precinct one, three, and four, and Road and Bridge.
Well, and the reason I'm asking is because we have some significant repairs that are needed to some of our big equipment, so if we're able to use.
On the next, on the next side, and I don't know where that money's gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, if we're able to use these funds for, you know, if they're, if they're at our disposal to use for what's needed, just to, we're gonna have to visit that, because we have, of course, our eighteen-wheaters, which need a lot of work.
I think that, that total was about a hundred and twenty thousand? That, from the first auction, that went to Road and Bridge?
Yeah, well, a hundred and twenty went to Road and Bridge, and it went to the Road and Bridge Department. No, it, well, yes, in, in some shape.
Because that was worth, I think it's.
Well, yes, a hundred and twenty, I think seventy thousand of that was already, we had gone over budget, so leaves you for about fifty thousand. Of those fifty thousand, I think we used twenty thousand to fix a.
The low.
Was it the low, the low boy?
And it hasn't been, like, it's just minor fixes, so there's still repairs.
Right, that's what I'm saying, no significant repairs still can be.
Yes.
There's about close to thirty thousand left of those, of those monies.
And it was just that one auction, and then the, the second one?
Those are the only two auctions for Road and Bridge.
I know we had, the commissioner had tried, well, I had included a fifty thousand dollars for that Caliche, or that was denied in, in the budget, but the need is still there. I mean, she's still having the problems of, of having an inferior road, and, I mean, it does bring a lot of commerce and taxes to allow you into the county, and I get that road, so, I mean.
And it's not just that it's a bumpy road. People are actually getting stuck.
Yeah.
You know, they, we've been having to, well, not the county, but the companies having to actually call other companies to call them out, because they're actually stuck.
Yeah.
Like those big eighteen-wheaters are.
Well, you got twenty thousand extra, you can, you can buy from there. I make a motion to deny.
There a second? Motion dies. I want that we approve fifty thousand, the original amount, Commissioner, that you, that you had wanted to.
I'm just gonna use whatever we, whatever doesn't, we don't use, which is, you know, just put it back.
All right, I'm.
Not more than fifty thousand, what you're saying?
Yeah.
I just, okay, so can we get a report for the next meeting? I just, okay, so can we get a report for the next meeting on what the balance is left over?
Yeah.
Then because, you know.
This one, this one was a separate auction, so they go down about how much.
Right, we're not talking about, you know, all the auctions we've had.
At this point, it'd be considered a revenue, um, so it's not, I mean, y'all can do it however y'all want, but y'all can either, it's a revenue to cover up stuff that we've already spent, or use it as a revenue to some expenses, future, uh, expenses outside of the budget, I guess.
So, I mean, motion, you.
I second.
Second, any discussion, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Two, against?
Aye.
Against?
Number.
Four, four.
So, okay, motion passed. Item number thirteen is to discuss and take possible action on the pending repairs to the Road and Bridge Department. So what are the pending repairs? Do we have a total on it? I know we, we've got that, uh, grappler.
We have the grappler, um, that's still outstanding.
I think that's about, I, well, I, I moved that invoice to you, which is, uh, Gonzalez. I handed over that freight, that, that estimate, I think it was about fifteen thousand total?
Something like that, yeah.
For the grappler precinct, for the precinct two?
Four, yeah, so that's pending.
That, that, that's been spent, yeah, that's been paid, though.
No, it hasn't been delivered.
It hasn't?
No.
Yeah, it was, it has not been delivered yet.
No, it hasn't.
It was, it was, okay, okay.
And there are, um, it's, it is the low boy, the belly dumps, um, and I.
Every, everything is bad.
I mean, I just have an estimated, it's about seventy thousand just on labor itself, not including all the parts.
And so, so the public and all that, that tractor and trailer that are moving right now, they're very bad, um, condition. We're gonna have a wreck, somebody's gonna get killed, and that's why nobody wants to.
We, we, I think, Commissioner, that's why at, at budget time, it's important to allocate some monies for, for, to help these, fix these equipment, but we chose to go in a different direction.
We just need direction, just because we don't have any, since we don't have a line item for, for, for those, for that equipment.
Yeah, because that equipment apparently doesn't belong to anybody, but it use, everybody uses it. So I think we need to, we have a women repairs for each precinct, and I think all of them need to share in, in the, in the cost of repairing them. So if we need to out, uh, I guess, fund those line items for each precinct uh, to, to match from those, uh, fund balances that we have from the sale of that equipment, uh, then we'll do that, but that's the way to do it, everybody has to pay for it. We have line item, we don't have one dedicated item for, uh, equipment, but we have equipment line items in each precinct. We got four.
If we find out what the balance is, of course, uh, Commissioner Lisondo, that there's seventeen thousand dollars left there, because she was allocated fifty, so there's seventeen there, plus whatever's left over from the previous auction, we can divide that into four, and we can go into equipment repairs. I mean, that would be nice.
I, I think we need to repair them, get one, one invoice, and then split the cost evenly from all the precincts.
And then whatever we can pay for those monies, we'll exhaust that revenue source first, and then we look at if there's any pending, and we'll figure out where it comes from. But we need to get it evaluated, have we got all the equipment evaluated already?
Yes. So, we, we got a plan of action, we'll get, get it fixed, uh, and see what the cost is, then those monies will be taken off the precinct's, uh, equipment repaired line item evenly, and then we'll refund those line items with, with the fund downs that we have from, from the equipment.
Yeah.
Okay. So we got a plan of action, uh, I guess we can, uh, no action on this until we get, uh, a number, but that's what we need to do. Item number fourteen is to approve quote in the amount of twenty-seven thousand and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents to S C M A Ford for an engine replacement for one ambulance.
Judge, at, at least, I talked to, uh, Mr. Chief Abiaga, and he wants to take it out to Baco Fund, get him to rub that on there.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's an allowable expense.
What is the balance on the Baco Fund?
So we have sixty-six thousand on there, and this costs around twenty-six thousand, which will leave us forty.
We, we've got two ambulances that are in order, but, uh, because of the supply shortage, there's, uh, almost a two-year waiting, uh, for those ambulances, so we, we need to fix patchwork.
Do we have, uh.
And, and we usually get, we get monies around April, May, it's usually in fifty, sixty.
Do we have more or less a timeline on when this will be completed, because I know right now repairs are.
I think they're fixing, they're working on it right now.
That I don't know, that, that I don't know.
Yeah.
Motion to approve of the Baco Fund.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Gasa, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to issue payment for the cut and raking of grass in Zapata County Airport grounds. Mr. Mon, uh, Mr. Diarua called me, uh, two weeks ago, uh, we had, the court had approved a, uh, the mowing and possible baiting of the buffalo grass that, that, um, along the airport. Uh, the contractor went out there, the previous owners of the property objected, uh, to, uh, contractor being on county property. Uh, the, they felt, uh, that their deed, uh, when they sold the property to the county, did not, did not allow for any, uh, that type of activity. We looked at the, that the warranty deed, uh, that the counties had since they acquired the property back in the eighties. Uh, the only clause that, that the county attorney could find was a reverter clause, uh, basically that if the county is not using the, that land as an airport, then it would be reverted back to the owners. There is no, uh, other, uh, limitations on, on what the county can do. Uh, after speaking with the county attorney, I, I felt we still are working with, uh, with, you know, trying to acquire more land, uh, there for our instrument flight, uh, and, and the expansion of, of the airport. And I, I felt at the time that I, we bring it to the court, and they consider whether we wanna pick a fight or a few bail the hay, or do we try to maintain a, a working relationship with that family? We're gonna need the cooperation as we move forward in, in the acquisition and, and, and expansion of that airport, so that's why I put it on. So, uh, the contractor, uh, has a bill that he spent mowing three days of grass uh, at, with the equipment, and, uh, three days of nine, September twenty-seven, September twenty-eight, September twenty-nine, and, uh, he had a piece, two pieces of equipment, basically the tractor, the mower, and then he had prepared to, he had raked the grass, prepared for baling, so thirty-six hours, seventy-five hours an hour for equipment and labor, and it comes out to twenty-seven hundred dollars. If we wanna pay it, not pay it, and, and move forward, let him bail and, and upset the, or adj, adjointing, adjacent landlords, whatever you wanna do, Commissioner. That's what's in front of us. Our county attorney couldn't make it here today to explain his conversation with the owner of the.
So, did they already cut the grass through, or no?
Yes.
So we owe this money regardless?
I believe we owed it for the work, he was gonna do it at no cost, but he was, of course, gonna bail the hay and, and remove it, but since, I guess we can still, well, I think that's spoiled already, we got some rain on it, so I think that bail has spoiled. So, yeah, I think we're basically, uh, faced with, with paying the bill.
Let me make a motion to pay.
Can this be paid out of the airport enterprise fund, or?
Uh, possibly, I'll, I'll this word Mr. Mon, just to see if he wants to pay out there, uh.
So, you wanna make that part your motion?
Where is it gonna come from?
Nondepartment.
Nondepartment. Second, it should just come up from nondepartment.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Lisondo, to pay the twenty-one hundred from my department, there are second?
I'll second the motion.
Second, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number sixteen is to approve the painting of the T hangar at Zapata County Airport from submitted bids, airport ramp grant to cover expenses, uh, we have three estimates on the need to paint the T hangar. Uh, we've got three local contractors, one contractor, Mr. Tomás Chapa, has it at twelve thousand eight hundred, uh, Javiro Del Bosque has it at sixteen thousand two hundred, and the third one, Victor Hernandez, at fourteen thousand nine hundred. And basically, it's to remove the existing paint, pressure wash it, uh, prime it, and then paint it, uh, with, uh, and it's, uh, a considerable amount, it's, uh, T hangar, it's, uh, three hundred and forty meter feet, uh, by eighteen feet of, of height. So it's a large structure, uh, to paint, so all the bids include labor and the paint.
Wh- where is this money coming out?
This will come out of ramp, so basically ramp allows, uh, the state will endure half the cost, so twelve thousand eight hundred, the county will pay, uh, half of that, whatever, six thousand four hundred.
Motion to approve, uh, the lowest bidder, Mr. Tomás Chapa, for twelve thousand eight hundred.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve the lowest bidder, second by Commissioner Gasa, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I think you only need to.
If you can, Judge.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Uh, nine, number nineteen is, uh, to discuss and consider contracting a grant writing and management firm for the Texas Veterans Commission General Assistance Grant. Veterans, all right, hope good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. Um, yes, we've got two items on, on the agenda, one of them is for the existing grant that we have, we're applying for next year. Um, and the other one is for the Heroes, Homes for Heroes, which is a, a grant that assists veterans with, uh, hatching up their homes, whether they have issues with their windows, any ramp, convert a sh, uh, tub into a shower, different things like that, so we would wanna apply for that currently from the Texas Veteran Commission, which both grants, Judge, are, um, zero matching from.
Right, yeah, they, they, they've done excellent work with those, really helped a lot of our veterans, so I appreciate you.
So, we just wanna go out for, for.
Yes, and, and so you will, uh, the firm, you will select a firm, or?
Well, no, we'll go out for bids, they'll, they'll come in, and then we'll, the, the court will choose, you know.
Okay, that's fine, all right, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Gasa, there are second? Second by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza, although the fair say aye? Motion carries. So, and this, now, item number twenty is to discuss and consider contracting a grant writing and management firm for the Texas Veterans Commission Housing for Texas Heroes Grant, and so the same.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner, uh, Gasa. I, I know you, you, uh, because we've been approving and facilitating those invoices, uh, from your current grant, you're helping a lot of our lo, the local veterans.
Yes, they're, they're, uh, we, Mendoza's doing a great job as far as getting with, with, uh, veterans.
I see, I, I see a lot of traffic going into the office, so that's, that's really good news, so I appreciate your effort, Judge.
So your constituents, please let them know, they have to have a little bit of patience, the process is something new for us, so it's, it's.
I will try to expedite the payments, I know, I think we need to straighten that out.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Judge, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Second, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen is to approve the purchase of an aircraft tug caddy from nondepartment, amount, amount exceed ten thousand. So there's, I think our T hangars are full, uh, and they, they have to be, uh, from time to time, uh, physically moved. Uh, our current tug or caddy is, is not functioning, so, uh, you know, we don't have a lot of manpower out there. There's a, a quote there from a, for a caddy of, well, it's for ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-two eighty-six. Um, so it is over ten thousand, about seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, and I talked to, uh, Mr. Mon, is about repairing the, our existing tug, and he said it, it's antiquated, it's been there, I think since the airport was opened back in the eighties, and it's, it's not functioning, so.
I think, uh, I think this is something that we can justify to pay out of the enterprise fund.
I don't know if it's, they, they allow equipment, or is it just, I know it's for repairs, uh.
Just to, because we, we, we hit the nondepartment line item, you know, pretty hard, and we just started the year, so it's over ten thousand, uh, how can we verify that, Commissioner, on that?
I, I'll have to research and look into it and see how, uh, he only has ten thousand repairs and maintenance for, um.
In his line item.
In his line item, enterprise has certain rules that.
That, yeah, ramp funds can be used for.
Uh, I, I can look into it and see if, if we can, we'll be able to get.
I, I think we were expecting also some, uh, repairs due to the lighting, that, uh, there'd be a, the air strip lighting that will be substantial, and I think we'll use most of those ramp funds.
There's only a motion that we table it, uh, till we, we verify if the table to be paid out of the enterprise fund.
Motion table, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gasa, although the fair.
Aye.
Motion table. Item rating to approve payment of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents to Motorola Solutions from Operation Lone Star for thirty portable radios, thirty mobile radios, and the installation.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Morning, Judge, Commissioner. I'd like to, uh, introduce Mr. Frank Wenden, R Z Communications in Oregon.
Okay.
Uh, we're touching base back on the, on the situation for the amount, and whether we qualify.
Okay, and on the byboard, or?
Yes.
Well, it's not a byboard, Judge, actually, it's a Houston, uh, Galveston area council, and, uh, we're part of that, uh.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, yeah, we are.
That's fine.
Uh, uh, I called, and then I looked on the website, and we're on there also, so.
You have documents to that?
Yes, well, I have an email, which, you know, an email, but if you go to the website, it shows on there that we are part of it.
And that qualifies as for non-bid, or?
Correct. Well, and what it does is, once we, uh, give them a P O, um, then the P O is sent to the H G A C by, and from there, they, they move forward with it, which is, uh.
Since we, have we been members of?
Uh, it's, it's a thing, uh, talking to Bobby, and he says, I think we've been part of it for a while, where it's a free thing, and it just renews every year.
That's fine, well, as long as we, uh, you know, follow what, what our procurement, uh, obligations are.
So, so what I'm proposing is, w, w, we issue a P O, send it off to H G A C, uh, they take care of it, if there's something that's not.
And the monies of this substantial amount are, have you, you mean, been approved?
Well, on, on this, once they get a P O, uh.
We submit for reimbursement.
What, yes, but it takes a while to get all this equipment, once they get the equipment, then that's when they'll ask for payment, which is a reimbursement, it'll be confirmed.
Moving forward, we may not be part of Operation Lone Star.
Correct, well, but they were thinking on doing it from Operation Lone Star on the sheriff's side?
Well, if, if, if we're out, we're, everybody's out. That, that's what it is. And, I mean, Operation Lone Star doesn't mean, for sure, because there, there's a component, there's several components, there's the law enforcement component, and then you have judiciary, and if, if our employees are not getting paid, we are, and the county attorney has said it openly in public, uh, we will not be part of this initiative, so I think moving forward on this, I think we need to wait until we get clearance that employees are gonna get paid, uh, before we start ordering any equipment.
We need to get that part resolved.
Because I don't wanna be stuck with a bill for three hundred and two, three thousand, and the county no longer part of this initiative.
Then we're stuck with it.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, we're gonna have to find a way to get radios, because currently our radios are obsolete.
I understand, yeah.
And communication is basically like the backbone of first responders.
Exactly, and I'm not against this, but the problem is, we have an initiative that, uh, several, uh, more than half of the departments are being let out.
Well, I, if, I know we've already passed that line item, but I may clarify one thing. The email that you received, or that we received, that says that the supplemental, uh, funds have been approved, is for the Lone Star Border Counties. It's actually about a million dollars that got approved for the sheriff's office, it's not for the court system. It's not the, it's not the three point nine million.
Well, I didn't receive an email, I, I spoke to, the, they removed the under review boxes, checkboxes from all the, our, uh, I guess amended budgets.
So, uh, we're talking about two different grants, Judge.
I know, Operation Lone Star is the one we're talking, this is part of Operation Lone Star.
We moved it to Operation Lone Star Border Counties, and because the, the. Operation Lone Star and Operation Lone Star Border Counties.
That's a different.
Two different.
And when did that come, we have approved our, uh, you know, our participation in that?
That was actually the first grant we received, and, and yes, we counted, Judge.
When was that?
Probably around September of last year.
Okay, so that was the part of the initial half a million, then you're getting additional million dollars?
A million dollars.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve item number eighteen after that.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza to approve, second by Commissioner Gasa. Uh, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just to be clear on that, Judge, uh, once then we do, uh, it goes to H A C, I'll keep track of how it's going along, uh, make sure everything gets done right.
I think, you know, this Operation Lone Star is, is the same, I mean, the way they read, it's Operation Lone Star, and the, uh, I guess accompanying grants are, are the same. I just think, uh, you know, there have been a, uh, a level of noncooperation, including the sheriff's department, of trying to help, uh, uh, the other departments to get funding, and receive funding, uh, to make sure that they are adequately compensated also.
So I've, I've spent several hours, um, the lack of colla, collaboration has not been there, we, I've, I've tried my best to help, but when it comes to salaries, or, or the payment of salaries, there's, we had the same, when we submitted for budget, um, we had the same budget, but when we received an email that it was not permissible, we went ahead and removed all that, we work overtime, Judge.
I understand it, yeah, but, but I'm, but I'm, but I have been a level of noncooperation with your department.
From us?
Yes.
How?
Not being able to facilitate the help, uh, to be able to, uh, I mean, your department has awful experience, uh, with these grants.
We've been, we've been, we've been talking and meeting with those people, Judge, and it's, it's the simple fact of just wording it, and.
I know, and that's why we, we've come back, uh, to, to reword it, and, and to date, uh, those, uh, employees have been let out.
Um, I don't agree with that, because I have spent time, um, I've been to your office with your, with your administrative assistants.
Well, I think we've, uh.
We've provided.
And that's fine, I mean, we'll, we'll take care of it on our own, but there, there has, from what I've seen, it is marketing.
So we provided the formulas from our office, and when I went and revised them again to go look at them, they had been completely changed.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, moving forward, let's just get it done, we'll get it done, and, and, and. I was gonna say, moving forward, let's just get it done, we'll get it done, and, and, and get everybody together.
Let's all sit down, Judge, and let's work it out.
That's fine, yeah, I'll just, we're at, uh, I think our employees are at a breaking point, and they, they actively said that they want out. Uh, we continue to, uh, uh, try to keep them in line, uh, but I can tell you, if they're out and we're out, Operation Lone Star is not, uh, it's not happening in our county.
So, there is one thing that we need to fulfill, and it's conditions of funding, they have not been fulfilled from your office, Judge.
There have been no funding to my office.
But conditions of funding has.
Everything has been checked, uh.
So, we, we need to submit the salaries, the amount of the salaries.
That has been submitted, everything has been submitted.
Okay, well, we need to place a phone call, because the, the.
I thought we had taken care of it, but apparently not yet, so if y'all can facilitate that, then I think that secures, uh, your grant also, for, for your departments.
What we just need is for everybody that's involved to sit down, and everybody know their, their role in the grant.
Well, you know the role, well, everybody's going to work, but they're doing it for free, Sheriff. The county clerks, district clerks, county attorney's office, my staff, have been working too much for free on this issue.
Have you, have you called a meeting, so you can meet with all of us, Judge?
Huh?
It hasn't happened, the meeting with all of us, other players.
I, I, we need with Joe.
Yes, and, okay, so, when it comes to the salaries, and, and supplements on salaries, the grant will not pay for additional salaries, or for, for a supplement on the salary.
We, we, we got that, so this will be a, a salary increase.
It will reimburse the county for any increases or anything it does.
Exactly.
Now, as long as that does not, that, it does not get submitted, and is in, in a paper on us, with, with either a policy or something, it, it's not gonna happen, we need to.
They were approved, we've already submitted, it's been approved.
Okay, so, if that, if we have that paper, we, where, where it's been approved, and we have the daily artillery reports, and the timesheet.
I'm just, I, I'm just kinda bringing this up, because our employees, the resident employees, are just about ready to have a meeting on it, they, they have, and I don't blame them, I, one of you right there, I see that there, they are tired of, uh, of doing extra work, and not being compensated.
Well, my, my ladies are working overtime, as well, Judge.
Yeah, well, this is not overtime, this is, and it's your additional duties.
Well, I understand that. Everybody is working, including the, the pressure sponsor.
They shouldn't be compensated for it to happen.
Well, let's take a drive up together to Austin, so we can go back to the.
Austin is good, I guess we do need to get Austin to, to say, send a letter to us again, saying, okay, send, send for reimbursement, so we'll work on that.
Yes, sir.
We'll work on it, Judge.
We have a motion, second, to approve that, so you'll be paying this and asking for reimbursement?
Yes, but at the same time, how?
So, this is not, I mean, this is not being, this is three hundred and fifty, but how are we gonna pay for this?
Well, the reimbursement, e- explain, uh.
So, what we need to do is, we need to have an approval, the PO has to be signed before we submit it, um, we're not submitting payment right away to, to Motorola.
Okay, so, well, we, cause I think we could submit the invoice to Austin and make them send the monies before we pay, so if we do it that way, then, if not, this will put somewhere on the county's list.
Judge, if, if I may, I represent Motorola, so in, in this case, basically, we get a signed PO from the county, we submit the order, the order's gonna take probably sixty to ninety days. Motorola will not bill you till the sheriff signs off on it, and says, he's received everything.
Okay.
All the equipment that's gonna be installed is installed and operational, at that point, you have forty-five days to make a payment. If, in the interim, anywhere in between, you receive equipment.
Okay, that's fine, we'll, we'll work with that, just don't wanna be stuck, uh, with the bill.
No, yeah.
Okay, we got, it's not approved, we got a motion, second, although in favor of the eye.
What this, okay, and what type of, uh, timeline are we looking at for the equipment to arrive?
We're, we're looking at, uh, right now, Motorola does everything they can to get everything out before the end of the year, but they have, I guess, uh, stockholders they have to answer to, so there's a big push.
Yeah.
If we put in an order now to have everything delivered, and out of there, warehouses before the end of the year, so.
And does that equipment, Sheriff, does that equipment arrive programmed, or is that another step, another part of the process?
That's, that's another process.
That's, that's included in here, that's already covered.
Mr. Bens, two questions, uh, how long does the reimbursement take?
About two weeks.
And how much, uh, this is from the Lone Star?
Border Counties.
Border Counties, okay.
So, at the worst case scenario, we would be within the forty-five day window of net, net forty-five that Motorola allows.
In, in, in any time in between there, we've always worked with any county, we can extend, you know, there's no additional charge for the exemption or anything like that.
And, uh, any troubleshooting or anything that needs to be done, you know, that, they will not get paid until everything is working, for sure.
Okay, sounds good, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you.
Item number twenty-one is to consider a contract.
Mr. Ramirez, here you go.
Can I approach?
Yeah, Mr. Ramirez, what, your item on the mowing, I, I.
Yes, sir, good morning, Judge, uh, Ricardo Ramirez for the record, uh, just to clarify the situation, uh, in the contract, the original deed, it states that, when we donated the land to the airport, it was strictly for airport purposes. Now, you go back, and I can't recall, but it's gotta be more than twenty-five years ago, the same thing happened, and it was addressed with the court back then, and mowing is part of the airport, uh, purpose, right? Making hay and selling for profit or for use forever, that is not, right, of course, and I think that everybody would agree with that, that's not normal.
Yeah, I think what, what we were, is, was gonna, county was actually gonna save somebody, uh, so we weren't doing it for profit.
And, and, well, um, and I understand that.
I mean, we either have to pay somebody, or you'll pay it.
Correct.
And a tip payment through the, through the.
And, and I stated to, to some individuals that that was fine, I had no problem, but it would be best for whoever was doing the mowing, and that was gonna make hay, that they would come to us and say, okay, look, we're gonna make hay, uh, you know.
Yeah.
Back then, there was a deal where, you know what, make all the hay you want to, and there's a, a split, or.
I think, you know.
And, and the, and the county would not, like, uh, spend any money on that, because the deal would be made with, with us, because that is not for airport purposes.
Like you said, we certainly were, uh, I was not aware of any stipulations, the county attorney did.
And it's not specific, Judge, it just says for, strictly for airport.
And, and that's part of the airport purpose, we, we need to, we need to mow it.
Mow, yeah, no, no, you won't, and they've been mowing it for the last twenty-five years.
So, this was an, an effort to save the county some money.
Yeah, and, and, and by all means, I mean, and, I, I'm sure that if you would talk to the contractor and say, look, you can mow and make hay, you have to make a deal with this family, and say, you know what, uh, seventy, thirty, sixty, forty, whatever the, the, and that's what they did last time, that's the only reason that I'm bringing it up, Judge.
I don't think that's in the contract, according to the county attorney, but, but we don't wanna get into, you know.
No, no, and I understand, but I just wanted to clarify that, I'm not saying no, but it, that's why, but, but again, if you go back, and I can't remember, it was twenty-five years ago, the same thing happened, and it was addressed with the courts. And they made that decision, I never said no, the only thing is that whoever's making the hay, that they would have to make a deal with us to say, okay, we're gonna make a hundred bales, we'll give you twenty or thirty.
Then you're kinda stipulating that that's still your property, even if it's not your property.
No, I understand, but again, the only thi- the, the.
I mean, we, we have made deals, and you have to sign off on them.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is that I wanted to clarify that in the contract, it says there strictly that for airport uses only, and mowing the grass is fine, because I've never said anything about mowing the grass.
That's what we were doing, but instead of the county spending, uh, hours on our equipment, and, uh, I think this practice is done throughout Texas on all airports, along highways, so.
But.
It, it was nothing, we didn't, I guess the county, and, and this, you know, our airport manager said, hey, can we think we could do this, and, yes, the court approved it.
Yeah, and, and, and again, if you go back twenty-some odd years ago, the same thing happened, and, and that's the deal that was made, is that whoever was making the hay, they would come.
We, we can negotiate, and, and so you can get some benefit out of it, uh, Chris.
No, and I understand.
So, but we're gonna pay for it, uh, we already, the court approved to pay for the mowing, we'll be doing the movement, mowing, and I know we've had a good working relationship over the years with your family, and we still need to continue that?
No, and definitely, I mean, and, and I'm not trying to, to sabotage anything, all I'm saying is that, and the only reason I'm coming is because this happened twenty-five years ago.
We're, we're not gonna split any profits with fifty, right, that's impossible.
But it's not the county, it's whoever's making the hay.
But, I, I don't think we can hold him to, I mean, this is a county land, it's county land, it's needed to the county, I think there is a reward clause, it says that we don't use it for the airport, then we're going back to your family.
No, no, and I understand.
That's the only stipulation, and so we can't.
And the only reason, Judge, that I'm bringing it up again, because this happened twenty-five some years ago, and that's why.
We will mow the airport on our own, Rick, don't worry.
I'm just, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, if they, if they wanna make hay, they can make hay, but that's not an airport purpose, that's the only reason, and again.
It's part of the airport maintenance purpose.
Mowing.
Yes.
Not making hay, so.
Well, yeah, it's a byproduct, and certainly.
And I understand, and you know what, and we can, and we can have that discussion at a, at a separate time, if that's what.
Well, the court already agreed to, to pay the contract, we don't need to go there, we wanna keep the working relationship we have with your family, so we don't, it, it's not an issue, like I said, we're not gonna go, uh, fight over a few bales of hay. That airport is a, is a, is important to us, and we need to continue working on expanding it, so, it's a, it's a.
And, and, and again, I just wanted to make sure that it's, that it's clarified that, you know.
Well, it's clarified that it's county property.
Yes.
And we can mow, and I think we can bail hay we want, Rick, but we're not.
Yeah, well, but again, I just wanted to make sure about that, was, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-one is to consider a contract with Texas Office Systems for a courthouse-wide fifty-bows paving system, Mr. Rocky Pinnard?
Yes.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners, I appreciate the time.
Morning.
The contract is up on your current postage machine, and this would be an updated software version of what you already have.
Ms. Mendoza, are you familiar with the changes? I know that your office is part of the main one that uses this equipment.
No, we don't anymore, I mean, Roxy's the one that takes care of the.
Okay, but your office still uses this equipment?
Oh, yes, of course.
The whole county does.
Okay, is there any change on the contract as far as costs or anything like that?
No, the pricing would stay the same, you get two billings, one for Raver Leasing, and one from Fifty Bowes, and the house would be a little bit different for each, but the total monthly payment would be exactly the same.
I, I know in the past, uh, like a few years ago, before we went to one consolidated system, we had, I guess, almost every department had their own, their menu.
Right, that's what I heard, that was before me, but I heard.
Is that possible?
Yes, I submitted to Roxy, I can't remember which department she had said was interested in possibly getting their own machine, but I submit her pricing on a one-at-a-time fee for any office that would want their own machine, I think it was ninety-seven.
Well, I, I, we could receive a comparison between going to one whole system, and each department having their own machines, I think that, that would help us, and what I get at is, uh, my office, my staff is being stuck with, um, all of the daily, if something happens to the machines, uh, making sure that it has, uh, all the needed postage on it, and, so it's quite a task, uh, there's, uh, quite a few departments, and I, I just, uh, I think we have enough duties in, in my office. So, if we can see something comparable to where each department, uh, takes care of their own, uh, postage.
Okay.
That, that, uh, could, could be considered, I, I mean, if it's, if it's overwhelming the cost, I, I guess we'll continue, uh, you know, doing the work for, for all the departments, but it is, uh, I've, I've spoken with Roxy, and it can be overbearing, uh, uh, per daily chore added on to her daily, uh, workload.
Gotcha, do you know about how many departments you would be looking at?
I, you, you can talk to me afterwards, and I can tell you what we had before, and which departments, and we can go from there, so, I, I, I wanna say that the, the pricing was pretty comparable.
I think so, and I, and we already got one department that wants their own, uh, because, I don't know, I guess of the material they send out, I, I'm not sure, but, uh, you know, I, certainly, I, I wasn't as, uh, I guess, uh, full of the, the knowledge it takes to, to see how it actually operates on a daily basis, but it's considerable, the amount of, uh, of, I guess, responsibility that, that we're adding on to, to my staff.
Gotcha.
I think originally, this was, you know, many years ago, when the county did the.
A little over five years ago.
It was, uh, I guess mainly to save money, I think that was, uh, the thing, but if we can get a comparison and see, and if there's not much difference there, well.
Well, five, you, in two thousand thirteen, you used to have a fully inserted machine too, and so that added to the cost of what the county was paying overall, but you didn't have the individual machines, that was two thousand and thirteen that you had signed that agreement, so must have been a previous event.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess that would come, come back, uh, for, cause we amend the contract, and, and, uh, I did speak, Commissioners, to the, our county attorney did reach out to me and say that, uh, he needed to look it over a little bit more, so we can approve pending his review and, uh, his final approval of the contract.
Sure.
Motion to approve a pending review and approval by a legal counsel.
And if you get that comparison, I guess we can amend the contract, and, or start with a new one, or how, and once, once we're in, we're in for good.
Yeah, for you.
I know.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we have to wait till this one expires.
And how many years is this contract for?
It was for five years and three months, sixty-three months.
So, this would be.
Has to be done today, but this renewed.
You're at the end of the present agreement, so.
Is there any penalty for going on a day-to-day after that, or until, I mean, it would basically be the next Commissioner's court meeting, which is two weeks from now.
Right, it just, when you're at, you wouldn't be out of contract within two weeks, you know.
When, who would be out of contract?
I don't have the exact date off the top of my head, uh, it was signed in September of two thousand and seventeen, uh, for sixty-three months, so maybe, uh.
Right, December.
Yeah, November.
I'll go ahead and, uh, I'll reconsider my motion very soon, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to table, uh, so we can get a presentation, comparison of costs at the next meeting.
Sure, I can provide it.
I should, I can.
Okay, I appreciate that, motion to table, second by Commissioner Gasa, although in favor of the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks, sir, and, yeah, maybe we can, uh, you know, kind of keep the same expenses, and that, each one be responsible for.
The customer's always right, so whatever is in the county's best interest, then county provides.
Appreciate that, so we, I will see you in next, uh, next courtroom.
Sure, and would you like me to get with you?
Yes, please.
Okay, love you.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Item number twenty-two is to approve the use of the softball fields, uh, for the softball tournament.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Gasa, which softball fields are they, all of them, or?
I don't know.
They, uh, they did say that they wanted to use freezing four and freezing one.
Okay, freezing four and freezing one, although in favor of the eye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
When is gonna be the date, tell me?
November fifth, I believe.
Item number twenty-three is to review bids and award the Falcon Mesa paving project.
Mr. Talia, good morning.
Morning, Judge, Commissioner.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner, on the, uh, Falcon Mesa paving, we bid on the project for the paving of Crane Street and Cardinal Street, that's the one that looks like, I guess, like this one.
Yes.
Okay, and so we got our bids from, uh, Move One Old Fuel Services, uh, we sent out some bids, we put it out in the newspaper for two weeks, actually ran for fifteen days, or ran for three weeks, and then we personally sent it out to eight contractors, uh, local and out-of-town contractors that do paving type services, to get interest, to have at least four or five bids, unfortunately, the last two times that we bid out a paving job here locally, uh, the last time, we didn't get any bids, and this time, we got one bid. The bid is at three hundred and thirty-nine thousand with thirteen dollars, um, the contract, this one's the one that's being funded through Texas CDBG, they have, uh, pro- I spoke to Mr. Carl Lester, and he mentioned that we had, uh, about, uh, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so it's gonna be about, about fifty thousand dollars.
I think, yeah, sixty dollar and over.
Something like that, yes, uh, on, on this, well, on this one, it was a little bit less, and the other one was gonna add, so together, there was about sixty thousand.
So, so this one has two eighty-seven from the three thirty-nine?
Yeah, cause it, uh, it only, it was.
The grant award is.
Two sixty-five to seventeen.
Okay, two sixty-five to seventeen.
Yes, so then that, that would be, uh.
Yeah, I think, it, man, it changes from time to time, but it's, I guess the base is two hundred and fifty thousand, what we kinda get, uh, from the grant.
Yeah, total, you get between three hundred and three fifty.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, from when, when I spoke to, um, Mr. Lester, he mentioned it was two sixty-five to seventeen, that what you have budgeted, right, well, from the grant.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And, and the county match, right?
Right.
So, that puts it, um, real close to two eighty, or just.
Two eighty, so, or still, about sixty dollars short on what we have budgeted, because three thirty. Two eighty, so you're still about sixty dollars short on what we have budgeted, because three thirty-nine.
Yeah, just under, under sixty dollars.
Under sixty dollars. And that would have to come from our fund box?
It would have to come from county, county budget.
Yeah. So I don't think we have that money in the Rhodey Bridge, but.
Nobody.
So, uh, I guess we, we would have to, uh, transfer funds from our, uh, general fund to the Rhodey Bridge to make this project a reality. I think it's a good project. I mean, we're getting, uh, almost three hundred thousand in grants, but we still have to come up with county funds. So we are already coming up with a match of fifty thousand, initial match.
I think so.
And so our, our match, Commissioners, would be, uh, about a hundred and ten thousand for those two streets.
Yes, well, yes, we're, our no increase, right? For, this, for, this for those two streets, and, um, that's.
I move that we approve it. The paving.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, and second, although, if there is a.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, do we have any timeline for this, Commissioner?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, they, when they award these projects, they give us from the inception of awards, they give you two years to do the, do the life match specifications, bid out, and construction, and then close out.
We're pretty far along, I think.
Yes, so this project, uh, should take us, um, I estimate about a hundred and twenty days or less. So we should be, be able to complete it within the timeframe, so that we're eligible for, for the next round of paving, the next round of bidding should come like in February. So we're, we're wanting to be either complete or real close to complete by, by the time you're, you're going out for another, uh, grant request for, for the.
I think we still, uh, have, uh, I give the selection of any project. I guess you can do that.
Yes, that, the court would decide, uh, that it's on the line.
On the line, yes.
Okay.
Item number twenty-four is to review bids and award the Texas Second Street Paving Project.
Uh, the Texas Second Street Paving Project, this project was bid out, uh, it's already been bid out twice. We bid it out, uh, a month ago. We didn't see any bids. We bid it out again, and we sent it out to contractors from Alice, Edinburgh, Laredo, local contractors. Um, even the county already did the, the milling for the street, and they've already prepped it, so to try to, you know, have it ready to go. So it's ready to go. All, all it needs is the, the prime code and the over name. Um, but we didn't get any bids last time, and then this one, we, we even sent, we put it on the paper, and we sent it personally to many contractors in the area that have bids here before.
Not any contractor, I was, my question, not any contractor that have done work with us before were interested in the project?
No, when I called them personally, and that, that they've done work for us and, you know, you know, good work, and, and it just, they, they, they didn't.
Too small of a project, or?
I, maybe, maybe it was too small. That's why I bid it with the Cardinal and Crane, so that they had their equipment here, and it would help us. You know, it would help them, you know, reduce some of the mobilization costs.
Right.
Uh, and, um, it, it still, it came in at sixty-six thousand nine hundred. We have, uh, this is a Texas-funded project. We have about forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So we're short about, about twenty-two thousand dollars.
And how much time do we have before we lose this, uh, contribution from Texas?
This one, this one we had for a while, so we, we.
Yeah, we're very close to it.
Yeah, we're ready to add.
So what's our next plan direction?
The next one is, uh, to bid out, uh, the, the, um, precinct one and precinct four, uh, the precinct four paving and precinct one covering gutter. It's also funded to Texas and the precinct ability pelican, uh.
Any bluebies for those three?
We would, we would wanna bid those three together as one contract, so that, see if maybe it'll add a little bit more value and get.
No, but, but I'm, I'm sorry, I, I should have clarified, I mean, like, for this, for this specific project on Second Street, like, what's the next, uh, what's the next move?
On this one? Well, if.
I, I'm, 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 it's the allocation.
The allocation for this precinct, for this precinct, precinct is forty-five. So you're twenty-two thousand short, short, yes. So then, if we, if you take twenty-two from the total budget, then that is twenty-two from the other precinct. So I, my recommendation would be to, uh, add twenty-two from your general fund if you have twenty. I don't know if you have, but I, I, if you have in your general fund, then you would add the twenty-two.
Let's get it out from the auction money.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And the equipment we don't repair.
Well, we just gave fifty thousand dollars. Let's get it out.
Do we have fifty thousand in the road construction?
Yeah.
You wanna get it out of there?
No. Auction money.
Well, that's, that, wherever y'all wanna get it is, is fine, if, if, uh. I mean, I'm presenting it for.
Well, and the problem that comes that we don't have a savings account in the.
Right.
We have one, and, and I, I get back to it every, every year to think, but, so, and we wanna make these projects, these improvements, we need to do them.
Yeah, but, there's needed improvement, I mean, that, we, when we drove the project before, we mailed it, there was, you know, it's, it's, you know, just, the roads, it's old and it's full of potholes. We've already mailed it, so the potholes are already removed.
I'll make a motion to approve, and let's figure out what they, okay, motion to approve bid, present.
I'll second the motion.
Second, although, if there is a.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, uh, number twenty-five is to review work completed, consider additional work, and approve invoices for the Safata County Jail.
On that one, Judges and Commissioners, the work that was completed, uh, I had, um, already reviewed. The state came and did an inspection as well. Um, the invoice, it's not in your package there. I have the, the, I have, uh, a, uh, this is a invoice number three out, out of, uh, what had been budgeted for, for this project. It's for five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, and.
Payable to whom, Tom?
Payable to, uh, Columbus Construction, and it was for, to, to install, uh, the, they, they, uh, added some roof, uh, ceiling cookies, a few of them, that were warped or falling off, uh, about to fall off. And so, uh, already had, um, had gotten, yeah, so, so they, they've already had gotten weathered, and, and we wanted, we needed to replace them for, for our inspection services. And then we also did, uh, there was a metal beam on the south wall of the building, on the roof, that we welded, we had it welded to the other beams that are coming from the side. The wall is, is just moving a little bit. We welded it together to keep it.
That's an additional team order that will be approved by the court.
That's correct, yes.
So has, was Mr. Gamples the primary contractor that had the most of the repairs of the jail?
Yes.
Have we had any issues with that, with his work?
Not to the point of.
So after these heavy rains, did it have any, any leaks or anything like that?
No.
Cause we've had a lot of issues with this work at the community center.
Yeah.
That's, I've heard, that's, uh, we, we, we not work, and I, but I, I may bring that to his attention, that.
And I think Mr. Gamples has, and I think Mr. Gamples has failed to keep his end of the deal as far as making his work good for the county, considering the amount of work we've given him. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that we continue to give him work. He's gonna, you know, be responsible for the work he does.
I did bring up the, the issue with the community center, uh, because I was at a commission, what he, one of the times that we discussed it, and, uh, he was working on this project that I was providing, so I told him that he needed to address some other, uh, leaks, issues with, um, the community center. He went in and, uh, addressed them. To my knowledge is that he had repaired those. I don't know if they continue to have, uh, problems after he did those repairs, but we did have some recent rains, so we should, we should know from, I guess, from the offices there, if it's still having problems with leaks or not. But they did go back.
There is still some problems with, um, his contention is.
Does that have anything still within your building?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
The work that he did was, uh, where we actually replaced the, with you siding, uh, is not what he's failing. Uh, he's blaming, uh, I guess, the size of the gutters, uh, on the roof.
So he replaced, he replaced the roof, not necessarily the gutters. So the roof's not leaking, but, but the gutters are overflowing.
Yes, well, and, yeah. And on the, I guess, the main structure, he did not replace it. He put some coating on the actual roof, then replaced the entire roof, but some of those continue to leak.
Okay. On the jail, he did not replace the roof, uh, that, he didn't do the, the roof work there. He did, uh, on beam, on the south end of the wall, he did some repairs on the interior of the, of the building. He also did, um, on the, where, where, if they have an emergency in the jail, they had to take the prisoners out to both ends, the north end and south end. There was a, there's a door that you can enter or exit that chain, that's there yet. We added some concrete by those doors, cause it was starting to erode, and there was a gap, maybe about foot in, in depth. So we wanted to keep that gap from continuing to erode and, you know, uh, have it, I guess, controlled. Um, the other thing is we added gutters around the exterior, so, so we did add gutters. Uh, there was, because there were some that were corroded and, uh, had already, I guess, failed. So we replaced the corroded ones, and we added some more in the in-betweens, where we felt that the gap was too large for the, I guess, the water to drain out. That, that was the main items that were, that were done. We installed, uh, about twenty down spots, uh, spots for, um, for those gutters, about a hundred foot of gutters, and. Yeah, that's.
So, so this is the only penny invoice, Commissioner?
This is, this is the last penny invoice. When we did this last inspection, okay, so the work that we have requested has been completed. I did, in one of the cells, I did notice that there is, um, we need some additional repairs. But we would, I guess, bring those to the court, so that we can maybe go out for bids for, for that, or, you know, however the court wants to proceed with those.
How much did you?
What's that?
Five thousand five fifty.
Five thousand five fifty.
Fifty-five fifty.
Yeah.
Do we have a, do we have this amount budgeted, or it's extra?
No, this was.
It was budgeted?
This was, yeah, this was budgeted, yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Lester to approve invoice payment of five thousand five hundred.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Mendosa, and I guess this is coming from a non-departmental. Although, if there is a.
Aye.
Item number twenty-six to review ELC preliminary plan and approve invoices.
Again.
Well, Commissioner, there's work to be done. There's gonna be a question.
No, that's fine.
Except I didn't bring any voice for this one, so. I wish I had, cause that was.
This is about a one-point-three million dollar project?
It's a one-point-three million dollar project, so you, you'll have plenty of time to, to deal with.
And the county is responsible for three hundred and.
Three hundred and thirty-three thousand, and I, I provided a, um, a preliminary layout of the clinic and the, the area that's gonna be revised or renovated. There are some walls that, uh, we need to either remove or replace, one through with, uh, with the judge, the sheriff's office, and the fire department, to make sure that we're all in the same scope in terms of what walls we're knocking down or not, and which, uh, which areas we wanna keep. The, the second sheet shows proposed walls where they will be separating the clinic completely from the, from the ELC office. And ELC, ELC office is gonna be approximately about thirty-five hundred square feet in it. They'll, they'll have their, their own AC and backup power, and, uh, we are recommending that with every contractor, um, uh, uh, review and make an assessment of the roof that we did notice. There are some existing leaks right now.
I think we're gonna have to, uh.
How heavy is to find a county building that does not leak?
Replace the entire.
I'm serious, I'm serious.
So, so we're gonna put money on the inside of the building if it's sneaky, you know, we, we, it's twenty years old, so.
And the facade that, that.
The facade, the facade also, we did a, a, an inspection of the roof area, and it, it's, it's made out of plywood, so it's already.
It's gonna have to come down.
Degradated on the.
Will there be money for changing the design somewhat a little bit, or the exterior look? Is there gonna be an upgrade for that?
That's why I wanna have a meeting with your office and the sheriff's office and the fire department, so that.
Yeah, we're gonna spend that kind of money. I, I think we, we should address the entire building and, and, uh, kinda bring it up to date.
I agree. So that, it, it is a county building, and it's right in the middle of town, and so if we fix the roof, fix the facade, the two entrances, and then the parking area, and then the interior of, of the building.
And all of that will be allowable in, in the grant?
I believe so, and we just, we just need to allocate how much, we, the, the roof would be allowable, because it is part of the building, and, and the facade, I think would be as well, cause it would cause damage to the air area if we don't fix it.
I know that tree's a problem. I think we need to trim that tree somewhat.
It definitely needs to be trimmed. It is dropping, uh, a lot of leaves and pollen.
The oak tree on the south end of the building?
Yeah, it's a beautiful tree.
Just the area that's overhanging over the roof, where all the drains are covered in leaves, like, completely. There's about two foot high of leaves back there, and so the water just doesn't go, and so it ponds, and so there's a few spots where. We did check the studs within the building, and they are not, uh, I guess, they're not rotted, or, or, I guess, water damage. They're still viable, uh, studs that we can keep, but the, some areas did get wet, so that areas to be, you know, it, it already got damaged, so we, we'll remove that and replace that.
So what, what is, do we have a?
No, I didn't bring, so, 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 he was, he was good.
Well, the item, the item rates are proven, boys.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, I, I, I was gonna, I guess.
Freedom will be.
I'm not saying.
This is a freedom grant, so, uh, conversations, meetings, uh, how are we progressing with their, uh, requirements, or, or where are we at?
Well, we have, I guess, I'd like to have, for us to have a meeting, so that we can provide them an update.
Okay.
Before, before that, and then I, the update, I'd like to provide it with everybody on board, like, in the same scope. And I, I have an idea of what, what we wanna do, but I wanna make sure.
I think your proposal, uh, uh, you know, conception of it, it, it is good. I think thirty-five hundred is a, you know, I mean, it's, it's not being used right now, it's big, so, um, I, I mean, I, I don't see anything wrong with it. I don't see why you can't move forward with it.
Motion to approve the preliminary.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, it doesn't.
The utilization of the, of the, of the building, I, I, I'm envisioning is having a, a, uh, fire truck and ambulance there on site, so that somebody does make a nine-one-one call, they can dispatch immediately from the same location and not, not have.
So I'm, I'm kinda seeing that you're kinda leaving all the offices in place, like, you're not removing interior walls?
That, well, we can, we can remove some and make some of those offices bigger, but that's where I wanna have a meeting with the sheriff's office and the fire department.
See what the cost is.
So that, yes, that, that way, I don't need communications and have, get an idea of what the communication will cost, the backup power for the building, and then the roof.
So will this have, I see two entrances, is one of it, or how many are you adding?
Well, we have the entrance, then it's only gonna have, the entrance is gonna be on the.
South side, right?
On the south side. That, that's, that's.
Should we have an emergency exit on the other side of the building?
There is, there is an exit to the back part of the building, towards the gateway. There is a, there is a door there.
Okay.
And then, I didn't leave, I mean, we can add a door, because we haven't put that wall yet, but I didn't leave, I wanted to completely isolate the clinic from the, the ELC.
I just don't know, uh, I mean, it's, it's a big space with nowhere to go in the case of an emergency.
They would have to exit to the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but yes, I, I, I follow what you're, what you're, I mean, we can look at, square footage-wise, it, it doesn't warrant, uh, to, to have a sprinkler system.
Right.
Uh, because it's, it's a small square footage, but, uh, we can put a door there for some ads, so that they can.
Emergency exit.
Exit to, to the other building if they, if they have.
Okay.
You just hope these bills can be aired out whenever you want.
That's what we need to do.
Alright, okay. Guys, a motion to approve, uh, the preliminary plan, and a second.
Mendosa, listen.
Although, if there is a.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner Talley.
Item number twenty-seven is to consider a lease agreement extension with Spectrum Golf Coast LLC for property at four oh six East First Street. The Texas extension will be a property for nine months. Charter communications. They, my office received a call from, uh, uh, their representatives stating that they're, they currently have a twenty-five-year lease on a tower on four oh six East First Street, and it looks like they'll be bringing that tower down, and they just need a, an additional nine months to, uh, for them to, I guess, bring it down.
Is the one that's on this park?
Four oh six East First, I, I think that's.
Excellent.
So they're gonna be.
It must be that main tower, so that'll be a, be a, uh.
They're gonna be removing everything from there, then, from that side?
That was my understanding of what they, uh, called on. I, I didn't speak to, to the description, but, uh, uh, that, that's my understanding, that they, uh, are gonna be, uh, removing. Uh, they are willing to pay a, a sum to, to extend it. I guess we can, uh, have Mr. Phil review the, the agreement, and but currently the lease is, uh.
I think that agreement was a dollar a year.
Yeah, back then it was a dollar a year. Uh, I think, since, uh, rates have gone up since then, I know, uh, the.
Over fifty.
A thousand dollars for the nine months?
For road construction.
Yeah, okay, you want twenty-two thousand for.
Yeah, whatever you wanna.
Well, I don't know, but I don't know if you're reasonable, they're not paying anything right now, uh.
I I would, I would suggest maybe just checking with one of the vein that can raid over the vein in in Jipog and get something comparable. I know that in uh.
I I know, I think I've, yeah, tell private property owner, just install the tower on his place and.
I agree.
Uh thirteen hundred a month, so.
Yeah.
You wanna charge thirteen hundred a month, a thousand a month?
Yeah, I I always wonder why there was nothing negotiated, I know this agreement was approved a long time ago, before probably anyone sitting here uh was in office, but um they didn't ask for anything to the county, I think it's something to the design to improve that area, that market needs or something.
So let's go, I'll make a motion to go with uh thirty thousand a month.
Thirty a month?
A thousand a month?
Uh not, uh hundred, uh.
Thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred a month?
I'll second the motion.
Motion uh to extend the the lease for nine months and Mr. Feroa review the lease.
Yeah.
And for thirteen hundred dollars a month for nine months and second by Commissioner Mendoza, although the fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight, to request the use of Zapata County Plaza on December first, twenty twenty-two for your Christmas vendors market.
What's your move?
I'm sorry to keep you waiting so long.
No, not a problem, I really enjoy it, my name's Victoria Bella, for the record. Uh we have created a small subcommittee on behalf of this about the county chamber of commerce to uh encourage small businesses in the county. Uh during COVID, there was a lot of um businesses that emerged from home, a lot of people selling on uh social media, et cetera. And those businesses are just as good um as the larger businesses and we need to help our own. Therefore, we committed uh to help um our community, community and our economy by doing several events during the year. This event will be like a pop-up shop right after the Christmas parade, uh which is Thursday, December first. And uh we expect to have uh several food vendors as well, because everybody makes.
Absolutely.
That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Mudella.
Thank you, Mudella, I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner.
Arson.
Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, although the fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twenty-nine is to request continued use of office space and utility to continue to provide services to the community, Ms. Maggie Ameska.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Any new pro, Ms. Ameska, any new programs after scan that are?
Yes, we do actually, good morning.
Good morning.
So we've had mine for about seventeen years maybe in Zapata, maybe a little more prior to the time that I was there. So that's one that's still on and it's subject to use outpatient services for kids, so I've been out there providing, you know, uh services to kids, families for all these years now. So we also have another one um that Jamie has, so.
More of a COVID relief, like stress program for the kids.
Okay.
We offer services for the kids at school and also adults. So we just bring in like activities for them to relieve stress and stuff like that, and did this too.
So how how much value does the our office space add to your program as far as for grants or what what are you evaluating, are you?
Oh, we are very, yeah, we wouldn't be anywhere. Yes, we are able to hold groups, uh large groups, we used to have a community coalition, which unfortunately, well.
The funding dried up?
But uh we have groups, we have the mindfulness exercises that we provide to the adults that she does, so.
And we actually have, hold them there in the office.
Yes, and of course the groups for the kids, for my kids.
Very good.
And then uh, what was the other thing? We may have another one that's coming along, so we're pending uh funding, we'll see if we get approved. And that's a family and youth support, so that would engage families and youth with family conflict, truancy, uh anger issues and stuff like that, so we're hoping to get that.
There's maybe some more funds coming down.
Yes, that means more employees.
Yes. We get kind of.
Because for a while, I I think uh some of the programs were were.
How many are you all right now?
Right now, who's up to?
Yes.
We were seven about four years ago.
Yeah, seven, so it bears.
Yeah.
Right now, also, another thing that we do is telehealth, so we do provide adult services through the tele- telehealth, so adults can come into the office from here and speak to a counselor from Laredo.
Okay, well, thank you for your.
But no, we were very appreciative, yes, we wouldn't be anywhere, we wouldn't be able to do anything.
We appreciate the work you're letting do for the community, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I guess we do have an agreement, a contract, was it, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, we do, I have it, I brought it, so we can.
Okay, we'll let Mr. Fio review it uh this. Got a motion in a second, although the fairies say aye. Motion carries. Number thirty is to consider appropriate action on an order concerning the adoption and designation of the Alcamina Solar Reinvestment Zone. Number one, pursuant to the county's guidelines and criteria under Property Redevelopment and Tax Abatement Act, Chapter three twelve of the Tex- Texas Tax Code. So as we mentioned in the public hearing, uh this solar project is uh being proposed uh in the east of San Antonio, thirty-one sixty-nine, about a thousand acres worth of land. Uh there is a resolution in order uh that Mr. Stone has prepared for the county to consider to uh approve. Uh and this will uh I guess establish a zone and and will move forward uh uh with their application and and consider uh may consider any abatements uh for the project, uh the court might feel appropriate, but I guess it's the first step that we establish a reinvestment zone, it'll be uh uh for five years uh and.
So we did uh, we did discuss this in length the last meeting, Judge, executive session, talk me the motion that we approved it.
Motion uh to approve uh the the resolution in order, uh with uh I guess we'll let Mr. Fio also review it and uh give us okay on it. Seconded by Commissioner Garcia, any discussion, although the fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirty-one is to approve.
Yes, motion to approve.
The street lights, which is one oh seven in Avrores, two oh one Yavero Avenue, one twenty-one Maru Lane, that's for precinct two and precinct three, it's four oh two Kennedy, fifty-three twenty-six Mission Lane, four ten O'Gavey Lane, one oh eight Babbage Street, six two six Seaball Street, four one Guadupa Street, fifty-three oh two Laredo Lane, fifty-three twenty-one Victoria Lane, two oh nine Farm the Market thirty seventy-four and three oh seven Cardinal Street. Got a motion?
Second.
Second, I did notice, Commissioner, I think we still need a lot of work to do, I I drove in on Highway sixteen a couple of weeks ago at night, uh coming late. I took and reported twelve lights that were out just on Highway sixteen, so I think we need to get out there at night, if we don't report them, nobody's gonna fix them. Uh so I encourage the commissioner to go out there, visit your neighborhoods at night and take take your camera with you and and so we can continue. We're we're paying for all those lights, we're installing more, but we've got hundreds uh of them are not operating and if we don't report them, they're not gonna get fixed. Got a motion second, although the fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, motion to approve items thirty-three to thirty-five as in for discussed on the items.
We've got resolutions and proclamations, we've got uh resolutions authorizing the county judge to execute on behalf of Zapata County all agreements with the Texas Department of Transportation for the implementation of a new fueling system for the Zapata County Air Force. Resolution of Zapata County, Texas, uh authorizing professional service selection for hazard mitigation assistance program funded through the Texas Division of Emergency Management and for the Texas Water Development Board. And thirty-five is the resolution of Zapata County, Texas, authorizing professional services providers selection for project-related engineering and architectural services for hazard mitigation assistance program funded through the Texas Division of Emergency Management and or Texas Water Development Board, so. Go ahead, uh got a motion to approve the resolutions thirty-three to thirty-five, we've got a second, Commissioner?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, although the fairies say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Commissioner, sign this resolution, is there only one that we have?
Uh, the other ones don't require the commissioners to sign.
Okay.
And motion to adjourn, Judge.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Mendoza. Seconded by Commissioner Garcia, we are now adjourned.